I want to welcome everyone to the five o'clock meeting. I will ask the clerk to call the meeting and call the roll.
A special session is being held on Thursday, April 24th, 2014 at 5:00 PM in the Commission chambers of the Municipal Office Building regarding public safety overtime and out-of-class discussion. Roll call. Maddox?
Here.
Kane?
Here.
Walters?
Here.
Fieldbrook?
Here.
Walker?
Townsend?
Here.
McKernan?
Here.
Mugia?
Here.
Holland?
Here.
Thank you very much. This special session has been, we've been working on this for some time. This conversation began at the beginning of this year and continues. We talked about it extensively at our strategic planning session, and this is a fitting conversation during budget as we're working towards the summer budget. What I'd like to do is review a couple of the slides that we looked at in our previous meetings. So we have a kind of a baseline to start with, and then we'll ask the departments to come. I do want to recognize there have been a lot of people in the Sheriff, Police, and Fire Departments who have worked very hard on these presentations. Lou Levin has worked very hard, and Reggie in the Budget Office. There have been a lot of people who have worked on this. I know Renee in Human Resources, Mr. Bach in his office have been involved. There's a lot of moving pieces here, so a lot of people have worked hard to make this possible. So I want to just express my appreciation at the outset for that. Looking at, if we can advance the slides, public safety compared with others. So we're going to start here. If you look over the last nine years since 2006, all non-public safety departments have been held firm at about a 1.3% increase in overall spending. But then when you look at our public safety departments, starting with Police, Police is up 14.7%. Next slide. Fire is up 33.9%. And the next slide, the Sheriff is up 54.7%. When you look at the next, that's an overall expenditures for each of those departments since 2006. And as we've discussed, it's our, public safety is our top priority. But when you compare these numbers to the rest of the departments, it's a remarkable comparison. When you go to the next slide, you'll see that all of our civilian positions, this is organization-wide, this is not just within public safety, but our civilian positions are down almost 22% across the organization since 2005. Yet in public safety, our overall sworn positions have actually increased by almost 10%. So the reason that the non-public safety departments have been held to a 1.3% total increase over the last nine years is because there's been a very aggressive decreasing in staffing in those departments, which has made it very challenging for the delivery of services that we have in other departments. And one of the reasons that the costs have gone up for public safety have been because we've increased staffing in public safety almost 10%. The next slide, please. The next thing we talked about specifically at the retreat was to look at out-of-class and overtime pay. Overtime pay, as you know, is when you pay more, work more than 40 hours a week. Out-of-class pay is when you receive the salary for the position you're filling in for. So if you are a sergeant and you're acting as a captain, you receive out-of-class pay. In our HR department, for all departments except public safety, you have to actually be acting in that position for 30 days before the out-of-class pay kicks in. And that's really a fairness issue. If you're going to actually do someone's job for a long time, you should be paid because you're actually doing their job. In public safety, though, it's based on shift. And so the shift is, if you work one shift in your supervisor's position, you get your supervisor's pay. If your supervisor's on vacation and you fill in for them for a few days or for a week, you receive your supervisor's pay. Out-of-class pay and overtime pay are both important for us to track. But if you look at this, while all other departments combined spent on average, have increased from 2006 by about a half million dollars, public safety has increased 1.8 million dollars overall in overtime and out-of-class pay. But then if you break it down by department, and you look at the three public safety departments for the next slide, please. You'll see that the Fire Department went from in 2006 around $200,000 to about 1.2 million today. The Sheriff's Department has gone up substantially. The Police Department has been more up and down, and is actually down a little bit from where it's been. But these are the different overtime pay figures. One of the things that's important to me, and one of the things that I've asked the departments to present tonight, is how is it when overall expenditures in departments have gone up, whether it's 19%, 33%, 54%, and the staffing has gone up 10%? It would seem on first blush that if you increase staffing and funding, overtime should come down. And in fact, that hasn't been true. So I'm very interested to learn about that today. The other piece that I have as a goal tonight is I'm looking for, we have a major fund balance, I would say crisis right now, where our fund balance is slated to have a drawdown of $4 million for fiscal year 2014, which will take it from $6 million to $2 million. We are at risk of losing our credit rating if we do not find a way, even within this year, to curb some spending. And even going into next year's budget, we certainly cannot go any less. We really need to be adding to our fund balance in order to maintain our credit rating and for just good fiscal practice. My goal, as we talked about, for all the public safety departments, is we need to do a comprehensive, and the Commission has largely agreed to this, that we need to do a comprehensive third-party look at all three of these major departments, as well as a comp and class analysis for the whole organization, compensation and classification analysis, to make sure that our, that we're functioning as efficiently and as well as we can. A lot of public safety departments are delivering the same public safety at a lower cost, and we need to make sure that we're not compromising the safety of our employees or the safety of our citizens. But this trajectory that we're on with spending for these three departments is unsustainable. And so we've got to find a way to have long-term sustainability and use innovation and other ways, looking at best practices across the country, to determine how we can reduce costs in these areas so that we don't run out of money and cannot fund them appropriately. My concern is if it just gets into a budget crisis, we start slashing things willy-nilly without doing the studies to determine where are the efficiencies that we can be smart about any changes that we make. Those studies cost about $200,000 per department. My goal is to find savings in 2014 in each department of at least $200,000 to fund the study for the entire department moving forward. So I have a very aggressive goal that I want to hear today, how we're going to save $200,000 because just in limiting overtime pay in these departments would give us an opportunity to fully fund those studies. The last thing I want to say, and we'll get into this as the presentation goes on, is that the $5 million we spend annually on overtime in our three public safety departments is enough money to provide a cost of living increase to every employee in the unified government. We could give a 3% cost of living across the board with $5 million. And yet, we have $5 million tied up with a handful of employees in three departments. And I think we need to look at that as we're trying to decide how we can fairly compensate all of our 2,200 employees in the organization. Some additional data sheets that were given to you when you came in the, in your packet, and these are too small to see at home, but if you are at home or you would like to go and look at these sheets, you can simply pull up when this meeting is posted. You can go to the website, and this full slide presentation will be available, and you can spend some time looking at it if you care to. It's the 2012 and 2013 overtime comparison for each of the departments. And what's interesting about this is it gives you an idea, this is the Fire Department for 2012. And if you look at this, there were 24 command staff in the Police, in the Fire Department in 2012. And 14 of them received none in terms of overtime and out-of-class pay. And if you look just below the number 24 in bold, it shows that the overtime pay was minimal for the command staff. And really, the command staff only gets really out-of-class pay because they are salaried, they're not hourly, they're not eligible for overtime pay as a rule. But if you look at that, the average salary for our command staff in the Fire Department in 2012 was $89,000. With that overtime and out-of-class pay, they received about a half a percent increase over base. But then when you look at the captains, the 78 captains averaged $2,600 in overtime and out-of-class pay, about a 3.6% increase over base. The drivers, 3.6%. Firefighters, 4.5%. Dispatch, 5.9%. When you look at that total of the 446 officers there, there was $1 million in overtime and out-of-class pay, which averaged about 3.8% above base for that department over the year. And when you think about this money could be used for a 3% for the entire organization, that gives you an idea. If you can go to the next slide, I'll skip over 2013. The next slide, please, is the Police Department in 2012. Each of these departments are unique in how their overtime's played out, which is why they're going to make their presentations today. But if you look at the, again, the 34 command staff, very little overtime because they're weighed, they're on salary and not hourly. But if you look at the sergeants, the sergeants averaged about $13,000 a year with a base of overtime and out-of-class pay. So you have 39 individuals with $530,000. It's an 18% increase over their base pay average for the sergeants. Detectives about 7.6, patrolmen about 5.2. The dispatchers are making about 30% more. And if you look at the average over the organization, it's about an 8% increase over base pay through overtime and out-of-class. Then I want to shift ahead to the Sheriff's, two slides, please. Here's the Sheriff's 2012. Again, the command staff, very little overtime, mostly out-of-class pay. Well, and this is actually shifted, they do have some overtime in the command staff. But you also look, the sergeants, the 13 sergeants averaged 40% above base. The deputies averaged 28%. The juvenile, 50%. You have about a 25% above base pay for the entire Sheriff's Department. So these are the issues that I have asked the departments to come and talk to us about, and put it in the larger context of our budgeting, and what we need to do immediately for 2014 and what we need to do moving forward into the 2015 budget. So that's the framework I wanted to lay out for everyone in terms of what we're looking at. And I'll turn it over to Doug Bach at this point to move the presentations forward.
Thank you, Mayor. And as the Mayor said, we have been working with the three departments that he discussed in the Sheriff, Fire, and Police Departments to take a look at the overtime and out-of-class pay that they've had over the past couple of years, factors, different things, what are the reasons, why are the reasons we pay it? What are the causes that come about that bring it about? And then also offer some potential solutions that we may be able to work with going forward. With that, we have tonight Sheriff Ash, Chief Jones, and Colonel Ziegler, who's here for the Police Department as Chief Hanson was out of town. So I'm going to start from that order. Sheriff Ash, I believe, will go first, and we'll walk through his presentation, and then we'll be able to ask him questions and work through his from that perspective, and then we can go on to each one from there. Sheriff?
Okay, thank you, Doug. Mayor, Commission, good evening, guests, staff members. It's good to have an opportunity to share with you and hopefully address and answer all of your questions, either in the presentation or whatever format we're going to follow for Q and A. Just let me know. First of all, I wanted to start with just a quick review of our statutory duties. Not going to get into the weeds of it, it's there, you can read it. I will tell you, the only thing we're doing in the Sheriff's Office in the way of providing services that I'm not statutorily required to do is patrol the parks. That's the only thing we're doing that by statute we are not required to do. All of the other duties that we'll outline and we'll talk about here tonight, we're required by statute to do. The significant ones being running the jail and 19-812 there, serving all of the court orders, providing court security, and attending to the courts, collecting delinquent fees, and et cetera. And of course, we have the same overarching mission of preserving the peace, although that's primarily done here in Kansas City, Kansas, by the Police Department, Kansas City, Kansas Police Department, as well as in Edwardsville and Monterey Springs, by their police departments. But we are there to assist them in filling gaps, force multiplying if they have a situation that develops, or whatever the case may be. So that's what we're doing. So what can we control? The things we control, you see highlighted in purple there. The things, you know, in black, we don't control. We don't control how many people come to jail. Maybe the ones that Sheriff deputies actually arrest from the field, we'd have some control over that. But by and large, the other people the Police Department are bringing to us, or as we're attending to the courts and the judge says, "Take this person into custody," we take them into custody, and we take them to the jail. So we don't control the front door of who comes into jail, and we don't control the average length of stay, how long they are there. That depends on as issues move through the court, as they move through the various proceedings or processes that they're there for, if they need to be picked up and taken to another jurisdiction, or they're going to be released on some form of community release, supervisor release, or whatever the case may be. Our staff relief factor, as we analyze it, and we do analyze it annually, we analyze it every year, factors in at, right now, at about six. In other words, if we have a position or a post that we're required to fill 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year, that post will require six individuals to be able to do that. Because people need their regular days off, they need their vacation, they utilize sick time, family leave, medical issues, bereavement, some people have military commitments, and all of the things that we, you know, we're required to let people off for, or we benefit them, such as, you know, vacation, holidays, and sick leave. The scheduled overtime, we can reduce or eliminate, and we'll talk about that as we move through the slide. Whatever the average daily population of the jail is, we have, the Sheriff's Office has limited control over that. We work very closely with the District Attorney's Office, the District Court, the Municipal Court, and depending on what people are in jail for, we work very closely with them to keep them moving through the criminal justice system. But the average daily population ends up being what it is because I don't control how many come in the front door, and I don't control when they, when they get out. We have some physical plant restrictions. Our jail is only so large. It opened in the late 80s, roughly 1990, as a maximum-security detention center jail to serve, almost exclusively at that time, the District Courts and the State Courts. And now, today, as you know, it operates as both a municipal jail and a county jail. So it was not designed, built, and constructed, and opened to be operated the way that it needs to operate today. So there are restrictions. We can only hold so many people there. However, in physical plant maximization and utilization, the double bunking plan that nearly all of you are familiar with, and we'll talk a little bit more about that as we go through. Okay, so as we analyze the 2013 overtime costs here, and you'll see they're broken out here by the way they're actually tracked by our Budget Department. We don't necessarily refer to these things in this way, but essentially, we have the jail and then everything else. We refer to judicial and patrol in our Operations Division. Administration, you will see in the Unified Government, is a term used in the Unified Government, Budget refers to judicial patrol and just about everything else outside of the jail, including you will still see a budgetary item for park rangers, although we no longer have park rangers. It's still, you know, shows up that way in the budget and is still tracked that way. So we're going to address this number tonight in detail as we move through the presentation. So we analyzed, where is this overtime actually being generated? Where is it actually, is it actually being worked? So this slide represents where it's actually being worked. You'll see two bullet points that are highlighted there, and I'd like to talk about the second one, scheduled jail overtime. Because we are on a four-on-three-off, 12-hour-day schedule, there is a lot of overtime that is scheduled in an employee's regular duty week, regular work week. The former administration made the decision, along with Lieutenant Colonel Fuel, who was the jail administrator at that time, based on the shortage of manpower that they had, they discovered they no longer could fund three shifts of eight hours, so a five-on-two-off schedule for a week, and divide that 24 hours up into three shifts. They found themselves having to force people at the last minute to work the overtime because it takes a certain number of people to be able to do the work, to be able to run the jail, you know, and manage all the duties and responsibilities that are required there. So by way of context, for example, we found some old budget documents and annual reports that were, that reflect back to 1993 and 1995 specifically. In 1993, the average population in the jail for most months was under 300. Today, this morning, when the shift report came out, we had 479 people in custody. So they were dealing with numbers under 300, we're dealing with numbers over 400, and soon, as we get into the peak season here, we'll be dealing with numbers over 500 in custody. In housing that amount of people, they had 95 employees assigned to the detention center to manage those under 300 inmates. That included supervisory personnel and their command structure. Today, we are authorized for 103 deputies, and we have 10 sergeants, so 113. We don't have all of those people, that's what we're authorized for, so we have 113. And on top of that, we have six command personnel, three lieutenants, a major, a captain, and Lieutenant Colonel Fuel, all right? So by way of comparison, you can see the disparity there in, you know, in the number of employees for the number of people that are being housed. But 84% of this overtime is essentially in those two areas, and it's staffing. It's to meet a minimum staffing level to be able to complete the work that is required to be completed. So for example, in judicial services, that would include court transport, those are the deputies that are required to get the inmates out of the jail each day, get them to the respective courtroom at the appointed time for their hearing or for their trial, or possibly the judge has scheduled somebody who's not in custody to come in for a hearing, and then oftentimes, or on a real regular basis, that hearing results in the judge telling the deputy, "Take that person into custody." And so they make arrests on a daily basis out of the courtrooms based on the orders of the judge. We service 16 courtrooms in the District Court. We have nine deputies assigned to court services, judicial services, for that purpose. Now, we're fortunate that not all 16 courtrooms operate every day, although we never know for sure which days are going to be heavy and which days are going to be lighter. We normally know a little bit in advance, and we try to plan for that, but a significant portion of that $608,000 was deputies that signed up voluntarily to come and work overtime in order to attend to the business of the courts. That also would include our out-of-county transport deputies that travel really all over the United States and pick people up and bring them back. They've absconded, and, you know, they're wanted, and there's a warrant for their arrest, and, you know, they've got outstanding business with the court. Includes those out-of-county transport deputies as well. The patrol deputies are the ones that handle the bulk majority of the rest of that work statutory, that's statutorily required, that I showed you under 19-812. That would be serving the civil process papers, the protection from abuse orders, conducting the evictions ordered by the court, handling probate issues. the evictions ordered by the court, handling probate issues, I guess that's over in judicial, that's another function over in judicial, and patrolling the parks and responding to incidents in the parks, as we've assumed those duties from there. So the presentation focuses heavily on that 84%, because as you can see visually, that's where the majority of the problem is. And it's all staffing, it's all having the proper amount of people to do the level of work that we do. As far as our out-of-class pay, we really only pay, we pay deputies to serve in acting sergeant capacity or acting detective capacity, for which they receive that rate of pay, and we will, we will pay a sergeant or a detective, acting lieutenant's pay, when he or she serves in that lieutenant's capacity. These sergeants, if you will, and lieutenants are fairly well frontline supervisory people that oversee the direct work that's being done by the deputies, whether it's in the field, attending over the courts, or whether it's in the jail. So we really only have those that we pay. All right. So we look at some remedies, and we can, we see that, you know, we can control what we can control. So with respect to the $608,000 in judicial and patrol, what we refer to operate as operations, we looked at the first quarter pay periods of 2014, because you all as a body approved for us to add two additional deputies to judicial, to court transport, if you will, for 2014. In 2013 and previously, we had seven deputies attending to those 16 courtrooms, and it was resulting in all of that overtime, or a lot of that overtime. The impact we've estimated, in the analysis we conducted over the first quarter, we estimate that that's going to be reduced by that amount that you see there, because we are now, as of today, have all of our positions filled in both patrol and court services. So we're estimating a decrease there of 130,000 due to those two new deputies that you approved last year. So we thank you for that, and we appreciate that. It allows us to operate more efficiently and more cost-effectively. I have, I monitor the shift reports that come out every day, the rosters. Each week, the supervisor in judicial services sends out his forecast for overtime for the next week. In other words, he will say he may need two deputies on Monday, two on Tuesday, three on Wednesday, four on Thursday, two on Friday, based on the court load we are aware of, and the number of people that are forecasted to be working, all right? So then you have a day like today, or yesterday, that occurred, where we had, or was it Monday? I don't remember, we had the two deputies go down. We had one responding to an incident, chasing a juvenile trying to flee from JIAC, and in the process of that, fell in the hallway and separated a shoulder. You know, within an hour of getting that message, I got a message that we had a deputy in the courtroom, in the district court, appearing to be in some sort of medical distress, and the judge requested, you know, that we check that out. EMS was called, she was taken to the hospital, they determined it was an issue of conflicting medication she was on, but, you know, it rendered her sort of temporarily incapacitated. So we went from a forecast today, for example, of not having any, needing anybody on overtime, to the courts ramping up since Monday, and two deputies being out because of those issues, and there were seven deputies that came in this morning to work overtime, you know, to attend to those specific duties. So even in our best efforts, when we can forecast what we can, we can't control those things that might get scheduled, that we're unaware about, unaware of, and then we have to respond to it. But to get back to the slide, the remedy for mitigating this overtime would be to increase full-time equivalent people. We're paying deputies time and a half to do what we could be paying deputies regular straight time to do. Will require us having a few more bodies, a few more individuals, but it will put us in a better position to be able to respond. So there are a couple scenarios and a couple options we've looked at, and I'll tell you where we came up with these numbers. In the last two budget cycles, we requested seven deputies to address this issue here, as well as a problem we had in offender registration. We've since dealt with that by obtaining a grant, at least for the time being, the grant expires at the end of June, and we haven't seen an announcement that the grant funds are available again for this year. So we're, we're looking, and we're rather hopeful, but we're running out of hope as the calendar ticks by. So the difference between the seven deputies, because you already granted us two, would be to add five, or the option would, the other option would be to add three. And then, based on the estimated expense there that you see, the $478,362, this is what we forecast we can reduce those expenses by, and it would still be a budget positive initiative for us in the long run, and for you. Now, on the jail side, I'm gonna, I'm gonna throw these up here and probably not talk a whole lot about them, because you can read them and see what they say. And I'm gonna show you three of them, options A, B, and C, all right? This particularly one looks at that estimated scheduled overtime working in the jail, based on the number of people that we have. And we are currently in the process of filling all 103 of those positions that you've authorized us to have. In fact, we're scheduled to start five new employees on May the 29th, that will get us to that 103 number. So, but, you know, based on all of that, the result is currently 312 hours of scheduled overtime per year for the detention center. Those 312 hours we're paying for at time and a half. So based on the relief factor, and considering that, once we add these new deputies that you see in red there, we could take the average daily population up to about 400 to 410 people. And so if you read down through the slide, you'll see that the staffing directly impacts the inmate farm-out expense. If we can maximize the physical plant, like I showed you in one of the earlier slides, we can hold more inmates in the jail, and therefore, we can reduce the farm-out expense by up to 60 additional inmates a day, if and when we're fully staffed for that. So you could see that the net expenditure reduction there is $465,000, or almost a half a million dollars there. But that's a lot of employees, okay? Not saying I'm advocating this, I'm showing you this as an option that we analyzed to see what it would look like. Option B maintains the 12-hour shifts, but has us adopting a little bit different shift configuration. It still would result in some overtime, but we would go from a weekly format, which is currently the way our memorandum of understanding is constructed. Because at the time, the memorandum was adopted, the initial memorandum was written, based on employees working eight-hour shifts, 40-hour work week, if you will. So we would shift that to an 84-hour pay period. So in other words, they might work a few more hours in the first week of the pay period, and a few less hours in the second week of the pay period, or vice versa, that would result in 84 hours in the pay period. That, as you see in red there, significantly reduces the scheduled overtime, you know, by a whole bunch. This option is predicated also on 24 deputies. Now, what's 24? Those of you that were on the commission in 2010, when we made the presentation and first presented the double bunking to you, will recall that that analysis required us to go to 127 deputies in the detention center, which would allow us to reduce the farm-out expense significantly, and I have a slide that will show that. You then asked us to break that up into components and maybe look at phasing that in. So we did. You gave the approval for us to go up to 103 deputies. At the time, we were authorized for, I think, 83, but we only had about 70 that were actually, you know, filled, positions that were filled. So we were farming out an excessive amount of people. So you can see the net result of this is only $94,000, and once again, I think that's obviously due to the fact that the high cost or expense of 24 new deputies. Option C is one in which essentially represents phase two of the double, original double bunking proposal that we provided you. You'll see in the first red line there, that it talks, predicated on 12 new deputy positions and another hard-ranked lieutenant to serve as the shift commander, we're currently filling that with an out-of-grade acting lieutenant, and two hard-ranked sergeants, which, if you'll recall from the mayor's slide, which category of employee was making the highest percentage of pay above their base pay? It was the sergeants, if I recall, mayor, at 40-point-some percent, all right? Well, this will certainly mitigate that significantly, because we'll be paying a lot less out-of-grade pay, you know, in that category, in those categories. So this calls for us to, once again, double-bump the two additional pods, which we have budgeted money squirreled away, you know, to be able to do that, so there'll be no additional cost to us there. But you'll see the net expenditure reduction in this plan is the greatest. It's a little over a half a million dollars a year. It maintains the 12-hour schedules, it does result in a little bit of overtime, the employees have become accustomed to the 12-hour shifts, they like the format of four-on and three-off, and we've got to remember, what would we be, what we would be doing is reducing a lot of scheduled overtime for them, which is dollars that they've had in their pocket, if you will. They're just like you and me, we're probably going to adjust to, you know, that paycheck, you know, whatever it is. So, you know, we're, although we're going to be taking from them, I think it make this, this proposal makes it a little more palatable for them, if they're able to keep the, essentially the four-on and three-off schedule. So personally, I and the senior staff, we like this option the best of the three that we've shown. So if we want to maintain 12-hour shifts in the jail, now, this slide combines operations and jail, essentially, if you will. So option two gave us the greatest expense reduction on the operations side at $306,000, and option C, that we just looked at, you know, on the jail side, you can see that the overall reduction there is close to a million dollars, $835,000. Option B, I don't like as well, because it requires too many employees, in my judgment, or in my, in my opinion, in our opinion, and we don't get, I mean, we don't, essentially, we don't get as big a bang for the buck. If you look at it, if we go to adopt the eight-hour shift schedule, and we try to go back to that, which is essentially no scheduled overtime, and we combine that with option two from the operations side, it's almost counterintuitive, but you'll see the total reduction in expenditures there at just under $800,000. So actually, the greatest number is on this slide, on the left-hand, on the left-hand column, with which option C called for 12 additional deputies, positions, plus the lieutenant and two hard-ranked sergeants. So what's the long-term solution? The mayor talked about a consultant to come in and examine our facilities and our processes. Our jail population committee has presented that proposal to you back in February, and with assistance of Commissioners McKernan and Walters, serving on the jail population committee, we have been sort of moving forward and talking with some people as to what that might look like, and maybe what it might cost, and all of that, all of that type of thing. But the consultant would come in, as the mayor talked about, examine the facilities and the process, and make some recommendations. Possible strategies include a separate facility for our juveniles. Right now, we house the juveniles, and there are, I think, 43 of them in custody today, somewhere right around that number. If we had that housing unit, we could convert that housing unit to a minimum of 150 to 175 bed spaces for adult inmates. Today, I think there are only about 100 inmates farmed out, maybe just a little bit over that. So you could see that that would, once again, the numbers remain pretty consistent of what we've seen over the last three or four years, would solve our farm-out cost and expense issue, which is tied to this manpower, it's inextricably tied to it. So we expand the current maximum security facility there, either by building a new building, or adding two floors to our existing structure, which the people from JE Dunn Construction that built the facility tell us is already sort of prepped, and the structure is set up to accept two additional floors and the space that that would give us. And obviously, we'll want to look to continue increasing efficiencies in our inmate processing, in our inmates moving through the system, and so forth, and continuing to divert inmates from jail, for example, such as some of the mental health treatment issues, as well as some other community corrections enhancement over in the community corrections department, that could help us manage a lot of these people outside of jail, and still not compromise community safety and security. Because ladies and gentlemen, that is the number-one priority. It's not about dollars, it's about community safety and security, primarily for, you know, our residents, our taxpayers, our business owners, people that come to work here in Kansas City, Kansas, people who live here, certainly the people who pay taxes here, you know, and are paying the bills. That is our number-one priority, that is our number-one job. Okay, so this is our historical farm-out expenditure. If you'll look at 2009, it peaked, which is the year that I came into office here. We started doing some various analysis and different things, we did a number of things that we could do right away, and in the interest of time, I won't get into all of those, but we were able to obtain some reduction into 2010, although not very much. In 2010, we appeared before you with our double bunking proposal, you approved phase one of that, and you'll see immediately in 2011 and 2012, the result of that, okay? So when I have more people, and we can convert state, space, existing space, and bring those farm-outs back, there's a huge reduction there. Now, you see a slight increase in 2013. The bookings remade constant and fairly flat, the average daily population went up just a bit, just a little bit, but the big issue for us was, we lost staff. There were seven of our deputies that went into the police academy for Kansas City, Kansas Police Department, early in that year, and I think that academy was actually 2012, or toward the end of '12, going into '13, and we had some other employees leave for b-- And we had some other employees leave for various reasons, so we had other attrition. So, you can see that as the staffing goes down and we can't hold as many in the facility, the result is it can go back up just as quickly as it came down if we're unable to maintain that staffing level. We've had great cooperation from the county administrator's office and from human resources. They grasp and understand the situation. And Mr. Bach in his former capacity, as well as now his current capacity, has made a commitment to us to allow us to be able to keep applicants and people in the pipeline, in the process, so that, for example, like now, when we're short five people, we can fill those positions in a relatively short amount of time versus it taking the majority of the year until we get the approval to fill them, then post them, then get the applications, then process them, and so on and so forth. So, this slide, and you can read it, but if, for just, if you'll focus your attention sort of, I hope I'm not lighting anybody's eyes up here. All right? Sorry, Jody and Bridget. Here's 11 and 12, okay? So, remember this, what, you know, what happened here in 11 and 12. And here's 11 and 12, and if you follow that across there, you look at those reductions in the change in the ADP and you look at those significant reductions in the farm-out days. That has got to result in less cost, less expense. Okay? You're not gonna pay as large a check to the farm-out facilities. All right? We're not gonna keep CCA doing well on the New York Stock Exchange or, you know, running Chase County's government like we did for two or three years. We paid them a million and a half dollars a year. All right? Those are significant percentage reductions. And that's why the manpower issue is critical, because it's inextricably tied to how many inmates we can house. Now, this slide, I wish we could have got it on there a little bit larger, but I'm sure that Reggie can get it to you because Reggie's the one that, you know, helped us put this together and prepared it for us. What this looks at is sort of a, oops, not you, John Paul. What this looked at is a strategic plan for the inmate farm-out analysis based on this line here of additional personnel, is that right? Yeah. Okay? And additional inmates that potentially could be housed. This slide, I asked him to redo this and actually, because we're gonna seek your approval, if we add five employees in amended 14, in our amended 14 budget, then the net reduction in the cost there is $253,000. And mayor, there's our $200,000 from the sheriff's office, okay? For your, you know, for your study or whatever. But if you follow that across, follow that line across, and I don't know how well any of you can see it or not see it, but once again, Reggie can, you know, get the slide to you. This require, this looks at a strategic, gentle ramping up of the employees at five or so a year over time. And you see that those numbers get to be fairly big numbers. Now, we can only do that in the current plant based up to being able to hold 400 to 410 in our facility. If we decide to do a separate facility for the juveniles and I can reclaim that space, I already told you, we could add easily another probably 150 beds. Okay? And so, that farm-out reduction based on the numbers we've seen in the last three to four years could eventually all but be eliminated. And it was 3.1, 3.2 million dollars last year. So, that's the presentation. I'd be happy to stand for any questions. If, you know, if I sufficiently put you to sleep and you've heard enough, I'll be more than happy to sit down.
Sheriff, I appreciate this. I have two questions. One, well, sort of three. One, the slide you first showed, showed about $1.6 million in overtime. The numbers I received from the finance office showed $2.1 million in overtime. Can you explain to me the $500,000? There it was, back, one more, right there. You show a total of 1.6 million is, but I show in this sheet, a total of 2.1 million for the sheriff's overtime and attic, for just overtime is 2.1 and another 200,000 for out-of-class.
I'm gonna ask Linda Hendricks to come to the podium here because Linda and Michelle Nicholson did the bulk of the...
Well, this does not include the juvenile detention center.
Yeah.
And that, these are the predominant, looking at where the overtime expenditures were being done, as the sheriff indicated earlier, where 87% of our overtime was going, this does not include, you haven't seen anything in this presentation including the juvenile detention center.
The juvenile detention.
And that made up for the additional 1.6 to 7.1, if you will, on the departmental overtime, and I think that's what you're looking for.
And mayor, as we moved through the end of 2013 and early in the, into 2014 here, we have ramped the, we filled the vacant positions in the juvenile detention center that was resulting in, I believe your slide showed those juvenile detention employees making about 50% over their base pay.
Yeah, 30%.
Yeah, so, yeah, this slide is not reflective of that, and I'm sure that was 400 to 500,000 dollars in overtime for just juvenile detention. We focused on this because it represent, represented 84% of the bulk of it.
I asked this next question at the strategic plan, and you answered it, and I was intrigued by your answer, but I want to understand it a little better. When you, the daily cost per inmate in our jail is what, $92, $93?
It averages about, you know, $91, $92.
So, when you showed the farm-out costs, it shows $48 or $49. So, we'll say $50 for farm-out. So, it's, it's a little counterintuitive, and you had a, I was intrigued by your answer this earlier in the winter. If it's half the cost to farm them out, why not farm out more? Do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah. Because your fixed costs are gonna remain, always remain the same. So, think of it this way, that you run, you run your household at home. If you have company coming...
Well, I'm the co-pilot.
Yeah. If you have, all of a sudden notice that company's coming from out of town, you have a couple of options there. You can house them at your house, and you'll buy a little bit more food, and you'll, you know, use a little bit more electricity and a little more toilet paper and some of that sort of type of thing. But all your other expenses are gonna remain the same. Okay? They're not gonna change. Or you can put them up in the Holiday Inn Express and feed them at Bob Evans or, you know, IHOP, you know, something like that. And so, it's most cost-effective to keep them at your house, unless they drive you crazy, then you may want to put them up at the Holiday Inn, you know? But that's about the best analogy I can come at, come at it with, you know, unless you want to close the whole jail and just farm everybody out.
Well, this is my question. What, I know there are, I think I know, I understand that there are some inmates we cannot farm out, is that true?
Basically, yes, and that we certainly would choose not to farm out.
And who are those?
Those are the special management inmates. They have maybe significant mental health issues and/or other physical health issues. They might have, you know, full-blown AIDS, they might, you know, have cancer of a terminal nature. In fact, we had an inmate die here within the last 30 days or so that was in our custody that ultimately had to be taken to KU because we couldn't treat him. And so, the, you know, those people are, those people don't fit into $91 or $92 a day category. It's up, okay? And we're farming the ones out that are, can be farmed out and are more easily managed because their, their special needs are not as great.
Has there been, have you done a study to say, what if we just housed our highest-risk inmates that we had to house? And the $50 a day for farm-out costs, does that include the transportation costs that you have to pay to go get people and bring them back? Or is that just the check that we write to the other facility?
That's a good question. The $50 a day rate includes basic transport. So, in other words, in just the normal flow of...